Item four, please. Item four. Item three is the invocation of the pleasurable leadings to the flag. If you would, please stand. This time I'd like to call on Reverend and Councilman Willie King, vice tribal fellow at church, for our invocation.
Mr. President, Father God, we thank you for a praying year. We pray more than I pray our Father, for the new Father this new year. We do a religion that we make this evening for the better of the community, and I choose yes or no. And we thank you. And you may be quite.
Amen. I'd like to call Mayor Pro tempore Randall Walker. For the pleasurable leadings to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. I hesitated because you're still Mayor Pro tempore, even though it's 2017.
Tonight.
Tonight. That's correct. Thank you, gentlemen.
We've only been together seven years, I know.
How soon we forget. Item four, our community partner updates. Is there any member of the community who have partnership with the city of Perry wish to address us at this time?
Oh, Mayor. Oh, you can be the first one of the new year.
Absolutely. Tell us who you are and who you represent.
Darlene McLendon, and I am the present CEO of Perry Chamber of Commerce. And congratulations on the successful 2016 in Desert Drive. Very good things. On a personal note, I wasn't able to be there to do the illness. I apologize, but I was good thanks. On behalf of the chamber, we ended 2016 very strong, very good, moving forward to a 2017 of bigger and better. And we start with next week. We have our PLI kickoff. Council, you should have been forwarded an invitation to that. We do hope that you can join us. We are bringing in some catering by Perfect Pay, so it'd be worth your time to stop by. It's real short, 5:30 to 6:30 on Tuesday the 10th, as we introduce next year's class, PLI. We will also be having a Chamber 101 on the 18th, and that is from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. If you think you know the chamber, why don't you come on and join us for that and let us see some of the new things, baby, that are available to our members, and you can help us get that word out. We also have business after hours with Sunmark Bank. As y'all know, many of you were there, they had their ribbon cutting last month, and we're very excited about them being in our neighborhood. And that's on the 26th front at 5:30. And last but not least, annual meeting is January the 31st, 11:30 to 1:00 at the Arc Center. We do hope that y'all can join us as we wrap up our year, congratulate our members' accomplishments, and look forward to our 2017. So if we can do anything for you at the chamber, please let me know.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President. Any other community partners wish to update the city of this town? Thank you. Before proceeding, I should have done this to begin with, but I would like to make just a note of personal privilege, if I may, council. You might notice there's a different setup that we have tonight. We have before us not only city council and mayor, the city attorney and the city manager, as you are used to seeing behind this particular seating arrangement, where we also have the current department heads sitting in front of us. We thought it was particularly relevant for not only the community, but also anyone watching through our friends with Channel 100 and Con South, to put a name and a face with the people in the city who actually do the work of what we talk about for so long. You have heard updates and reports from them periodically during our many meetings, but I wanted to try a little bit different format so that you will begin to recognize them, not only in the community, but also put a name with a face in order to know who you're talking to and why going forward. I can't say that they are real enthusiastic about it, but we think they look fantastic presented to you this evening. We will try this format for a while on that. And I thank them for their forbearance and for being willing to take on this particular new format. Instead of sitting in the back looking at us, they have an opportunity to sit up front and look at you like we did from that standpoint. But we're looking forward to the great job they continue to do, and we'll give credit where credit is due, and that is the primary reason that we are trying this format on that. Having said all of that, back to the agenda. Item five is the selection of a 2017 Mayor Pro tempore. At this time, council, I will entertain a nomination for the 2017 Mayor Pro tempore.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate my fellow District Two Representative, Mr. William Jackson.
There's a nomination in second for Mr. William Jackson, I don't think any others. Mr. Jackson, if you were elected, will you serve? It's good to know. Any others? Hearing none, would the requestor change that to a motion?
I move that Mr. Jackson be our 2017 Mayor Pro tempore.
There's a motion. Would the seconder also second that one?
Second.
And second. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, congratulations, Mayor Pro tempore, Jackson. Looking forward to working with you. If I may, Mr. Walker, will you join me after? Every year, this almost becomes rote, and I don't mean it for that to happen, but we also have a specific way that we do business, not only here in the city of Perry, but most organizations do. The mayor, which is myself, has various things that I'm expected to be at, one of which is obviously these meetings and conducting them, and the work sessions that we do. However, because it's a part-time job and other reasons, I have a full-time job that sometimes carries me to duties when I'm not able to be here. And that's when the Mayor Pro tempore would step in, in my stead, and either conduct meetings or attend other meetings, represent the city of Perry when the mayor is not available. Mr. Walker has done just that during the 2016 calendar year. Once, and it's not the first time that you have done that, I want to tell him personally and publicly that I really appreciate your willingness not only to serve, but also the enthusiastic desire that you have to step in for me on various occasions. He has run various meetings, both work sessions and city council meetings. He's also stepped in to represent the city of Perry for some very important meetings, both at GMA and at Regional Commission and at the base, and just about at the Chamber of Commerce events. A lot of things that I was just not physically able to attend, and I think that is very important. I can tell you that he has done this with distinguishment, with honor, and I'm very proud that he has stepped into that role and done such an exemplary job. So, on behalf of your good service, I would like to present this plaque, presented around the Walker for outstanding leadership as Mayor Pro tempore, this January of 2017 for the year of 2016. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, no, that's, it is a little blinding, eh? Is that better?
Item six, our appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities. We have one, council. The Perry Main Street Advisory Board has delivered some recommendations for us to consider. You have some information in your documentation. The Main Street Advisory Board requests our consideration for two board appointments. They voted to accept the nomination of Mr. Kelly Ellis for reappointment as the Downtown Development Authority's representative. He was appointed earlier this year to field an unexpired term of Ms. Susan Scrag. If reappointed, his term would expire on December the 31st, 2019. Also, the board voted to accept the nomination of Mr. John Holbert for appointment to the board with the term to expire December 21, 2019. His will succeed Mr. Brownlee as the representative of the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the Main Street Advisory Board's recommendations for appointment and reappointment to that board as described. Is a motion in the second, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item seven, our citizens with input. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address council on any matter at this time? Thank you. Item eight is a review of minutes. Item 8A, council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the December 12th, 2016 called meeting, the December 19th, 2016 work session, the December 20th, 2016 pre-council meeting, and the December 20th, 2016 council meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. Is a motion in the second. Is there any additions, deletions, changes, or discussion concerning these minutes at this time? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine is old business. We have one item. Item 9A is a confirmation of a firm natural gas demand. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as we talked about in the pre-council meeting, it is time for you to confirm or possibly change the amount of firm natural gas demand that we will correspond with MGAG, our supplier, providing.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. You have been provided the documentation. We have had lengthy discussions in previous council meetings and work sessions concerning this opportunity that we have. In summary, in very short summary, we have an opportunity because of an expansion within the system for the city of Perry to participate in that expansion, to receive firm gas for our commercial industrial customers that would include some expansion for, for example, Sandler Nonwoven, in their anticipated growth. Excuse me. And also to firm some existing appliance base that we have for natural gas. You may be aware that there are two types of natural gas that's provided. One is considered firm, which means it is not, does not cut off. Hospitals would be an example of that, and some processes from an industrial basis, which is, one is, which is not in the city of Perry, would be Anchor Glass, that their process requires their furnaces to be on 24/7. They need some notice before it can be, in order to shut it down, and every second that those furnaces are down is very big dollars. So that's the type of thing hospitals, schools, jails, that type thing. We do have some customers within the city of Perry who requests and receives some firm natural gas. The other type is what we call interruptible. If the, if need be, then those particular customers with notice, not much, but with notice, can be cut off for a specific period of time based on the demand, and it's not necessarily always weather related. Depends on the demand of the rest of the system in the state that can affect the capacity and the demand that we have on our particular line. As discussed before, we have an opportunity to increase that and firm it up, no pun intended. So at this time, council, I will ask for a motion to set our net firm, if that's the right way to put it, Mr. Gilmore, at 1,200 DecaThermes, without going through how we got to that point. You have seen the documentation before. We've had discussions about that. We'd like to provide that to anyone who is interested. And we have Mr. Rusty Huff with MGAG with us tonight that gave an explanation during our pre-council meeting and is here to answer any questions that council has. At this time, we've included in this is that we had a long discussion concerning something called peaking service, P-E-A-K-I-N-G. It's available for cities or provide natural gas providers to contract with these particular companies that can provide specific amounts of natural gas during peak hours or days, generally between even November or December and March of the winter months, rather than having to purchase gas an entire year just to have it for those specific days. And we have taken advantage of that particular service in the past and anticipate its use in the future, but that is not what we're talking about tonight, even though it is available for us. Again, I would ask for a motion for us to modify our previous request, which was 1,940 DecaThermes, to 1,200 DecaThermes as we have previously described.
This is in addition to our current firm contract.
That is correct. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Did I state that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything I need to add to what I've already stated to further confuse the issue? Or you wouldn't confuse it, I did.
No, sir. I believe you've covered it. You've become a very good ambassador for natural gas.
Well, I'm not hiring myself out, because I've already gone past my level of consciousness sometimes. Any other discussion from council? Does council have any questions, Mr. Huff, our representative, Mr. Carter, from MGAG? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your participation, and then we look forward to working with you as we have in the past.
And I'll keep those forms.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Item 10 is any other old business. Item 10A is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. 10B is any other old business from council members? Ms. Biden-Grace? Mr. Jones? Mr. Walker? Mr. Hunt? Mr. Jackson? Mr. King? Thank you. Item 10C is any other old business from the city manager? Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10D is any other old business from the city attorney? Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 11 is new business. Item 11A matters that have been referred from the January 3rd, 2017 pre-council meeting that we had at 5:00. Mr. Gilmore, is there anything that we need to address coming from that particular meeting at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 11B, our ordinances for the first reading and introduction. 11B1, council, this is the first reading of an ordinance that will amend the combination excise tax portion of the Perry code. Ms. King?
Mayor, excuse me, just as we discussed upstairs, this ordinance is due to the fact that on December 21st, DCA changed their reporting requirements for the hotel motel tax report. And in doing so, we had to make sure that we had our current ordinance on file for collecting hotel motel tax. When I submitted this report, DCA reviewed it, I mean, the ordinance, DCA reviewed it, and had some recommendation for some changes that would benefit us in the event that we were ever challenged. One of those changes was to redefine the authorization that we use to collect our hotel motel taxes. Current ordinance states 481351A4, which we are collecting up under 481351B. So it's the major change that we need to make. Those recommendations have been submitted to Attorney Walker for review, and the ordinance is being prepared for those changes.
Thank you, Ms. King. Does a new member of council have any questions of Ms. King concerning this particular item at this time? Mr. Walker, is anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. King. Council, because this is an ordinance for the first reading and introduction, no action is required by you at this time. Item 11C is a special events application request from the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce. 11C1 is the 2017 Dogwood Festival Perry Proud kickoff on Saturday, March 11, 2017, with a rain date of Saturday, March 25, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. But more? And or Chief Lynn?
Mayor and council, this is an annual event that Perry Chamber of Commerce sponsors here to give, pre-Dogwood Festival. The kickoff includes distribution of Perry Proud buttons, car paint, and floral arrangements. Everything is standard for to prior units to be placed.
Thank you. Chief, would you like to cover the street closures for this as well?
Absolutely. As y'all know, we did a special events application fairly recently, and I will say it's a joy to give one that's well in town and thoroughly filled out, so thanks to the chamber for that. The kickoff event, which the planned date is March 11, the preferred, we're coming, the application has two approvals, one is a contingency. So the primary location is preferred is the 1,000 Block of Carroll, the park that, you know, runs between Washington and Macon. For that event, Ms. Warren just outlined, if there should be a large event going on at Perry Methodist for some reason, a way that's not yet planned, or a funeral which we have no way to predict, then the alternate location would be Jernigan between Carroll and Commerce. And the police department has no problem supporting either one of those locations with y'all's approval.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Warren. Is there anything you'd, did y'all like to add for this particular point? Ms. McLendon, anything you want to add?
No, sir. They covered it well. We thank you.
And council, any questions of anyone concerning this particular event? If not, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the special events application request for the Perry Proud kickoff for Saturday, March 11, with a rain date of March 25, as described. A motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item 11C2 is the 29th Annual Dogwood Festival that will occur on Saturday and Sunday, April 8 and 9, 2017. Ms. Warren and Chief Lynn?
This is once again the annual event hosted by Perry Chamber of Commerce. It is 29th year, Mayor and council, and your board, and a number of city centers that are being qualified by the Perry Chamber of Commerce relatives to this event.
Thank you. Chief?
The street closures for this event are kind of phased in due to the nature of it. So the portion of Main Street between Jernigan and Ball will close first, April 6 at 5:00 p.m., and that is to facilitate the setting up and filling of the Doc Dog School that, you know, that was in the middle of the street there. All the other streets are requested to be closed on April the 7th at 4:00 p.m., which allows the vendors to then come in and set up, start doing business on the morning of 8. This is our standard street closure scenario, if you will. So Main from Jernigan to Ball on April 6 at 5:00 p.m., Carroll between Jernigan and Washington, and Ball between Main and Commerce and Jernigan from Main to Carroll, which would all occur at April the 7th at 4:00 p.m. And we've done this many times, we have no problem supporting this.
Thank you. Ms. McLendon, anything to add?
No, sir. That gets it all.
Thank you. And I assume that the merchants who will be affected by these street closures will be given notice and plenty of time for them to make accommodations for that, as we have in the past.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions of anyone who has made a presentation concerning this particular event at this time? Hearing none? At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the 29th Annual Dogwood Festival that will occur on Saturday and Sunday, April 8 and 9, with inclusion, including the street closures as described.
Sir, a second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. McLendon, we're looking forward again to this particular event. It's one of the premier events that we have in the city, and we thank you for you and your team's efforts in making this happen in order to attract not only our current citizens, but also the new visitors that we have that will come just for this particular event. It's always a pleasure, and we thank you for doing it. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Gilmore, is there any new business that needs to come before us at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 12, department head items. We will start with Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor and council, I do have a couple of items for you this evening. Sure, Mr. Di will be covering this, but the Perry Main Street Advisory Board and Leisure Services are going to be having a downtown movie night. This event's to be held on Friday, February 10th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on the Courthouse lawn, or the old Courthouse lawn in downtown Perry. They're going to be showing a cartoon, followed by The Quiet Man. Should be a wonderful event. We welcome everyone to attend. Our communication specialist, Ellen Palmer, has put together a year in review presentation. It's a very nice slideshow with about 90 photographs that showed what happened in Perry in 2016. She does a very good job on this, and it's actually streaming on our Facebook right now, and it will be up on our website tomorrow, so I encourage everyone to take a look at that and see what happened in Perry in 2016, if it was a lie. Just, I've been receiving a lot of phone calls and a lot of questions regarding the housing grants taking place in Sand Hill, and I wanted to provide a quick update on that. Both are moving forward, and, you know, like any sort of federal grant program, moving forward a little bit slowly, but I promise they will be coming along here in the next couple of months. Regarding the CHIP grant, we should see construction start on that this month, prior to February. And then for the CDVG grant, I've worked with DCA on a couple of items, but we should see construction begin in March on those. Everything is moving very smoothly, albeit slowly, but it will be wonderful once it's completed. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. From the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Di.
I have nothing tonight, sir.
You're not going to talk about the movie night?
No, I covered pretty good. I'm a good speaker.
That's why I skipped over to you, I thought you might have something to add.
Just that we would love for everybody to attend. It is, it is not a movie that we were traditionally having in our rural park site. We were fortunate to be able to offer more movies this year after our experiment last year, and in thought of having one that's a hidden children are welcome, I just don't know how much of enjoying John Wayne, this is, this is more towards for us adults to have a night and evening and the whole day night around some time, they want some fun day stuff. Keep your fingers crossed up to the moon and your star.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood.
Mayor, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn?
I have nothing to eat, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker?
Also, nothing tonight, sir.
Very good. Thank you. And I know I've got everybody, because I've got nobody here. Thank you very much. Item 13, our council member items. Ms. Biden-Grace?
Have none.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. King? Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Newby?
No, sir.
Thank you. By the way, Ms. Newby is an associate of Mr. Walker's with the law firm.
She was after me.
We appreciate the job that y'all continue to do on behalf of the city of Perry. Item 14 is general public items. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address council on any item at this time? Is there any member of the public who wishes to address counsel on any item at this time? Thank you. Item 15 are mayor items. Just a couple of dates to remind you. Our next meeting, work session, because of there being so many Monday holidays that we have in January, and such, will be a week from yesterday on Monday, the 9th, at 5:00 p.m. Please like a note of that. Ms. McLinden has already mentioned that the PLI class is coming up, and we're very excited to have that particular group getting started again. That is a very good way for the Perry Leadership Institute to bring people into the realm, if you will, of how government and industry works, and it is also a source of people when we look to make appointments for boards, commissions, and authorities for people that might have an interest in any one of those specific areas for us to choose from, and we're very excited about that. I'd like to remind counsel that our next regularly scheduled council and pre-council meeting will be January the 17th at 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. All of our meetings are open to the public. The pre-council meeting is typically held in the upstairs conference room on the second floor, if you're welcome to attend. The Georgia Municipal Association is having its annual Mayor's Day in Atlanta again this year. It is going to be Friday, January the 20th through Monday, January the 23rd. That is a very good opportunity for counsel to receive continuing education. They put on some very good classes. I can't say that I stay awake through some of them, but there's very good information, and for fear of being photographed asleep, I stay awake with today's new technology from that standpoint. But in spite of that, it is very good information. They do a good job of keeping counsel abreast of current changes in law, trending of items that are coming for both large and small cities and the state of Georgia as far as municipalities are concerned. There are 535 or so cities in the state of Georgia. It's an opportunity for us to meet with our counterparts, both mayor and council members. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel, so the opportunity to network is just as important, if not as important, as the continuing education that we receive, and we always look forward to doing that in Atlanta in January and for the June, Georgia Municipal Association's annual meeting in Savannah in June of every year. That is all I have at this point. I'd like to wish everyone a very happy new year. It's going to get cold this weekend. This board's authorities and commissions are there on January the 4th. And if there's nothing else to come before us, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session for real estate.
Slow down a second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your participation.